Our city attorney will take him up to lead us to the pledge allegiance, and we will raise our praise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. To heaven we bow, we thank this opportunity to come here tonight and do the work of our city. We ask that you be with each and one of us as we travel through the holiday season with our country and with our city. Ladies and goddess in everything we do, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And after all this meeting, the order of Port St. Joe City Commission, our first honourable business tonight, gentlemen, is going to be to end up by me, Commissioner, Mr. Eric Langston. Now Eric, if you'll come forward at this time, and Chester, you want to administer the oath to him? Man get you on camera too.
Eric, raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible. If you would, repeat after me. I, Eric Davis Langston.
I, Eric Davis Langston.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and protect and defend.
That I will support and protect and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
Constitution and the government of the United States.
The state of Florida and.
The state of Florida and.
The charter of the city of Port St. Joe.
The charter of the city of Port St. Joe.
I am dutifully qualified.
I am dutifully qualified.
To hold office under the Constitution of the state.
To hold office under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Port St. Joe City Commissioner, Group One.
Port St. Joe City Commissioner, Group One.
For Port St. Joe, Florida.
For Port St. Joe, Florida.
On which I am now about to enter.
Of which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Welcome, Mr. Langston, to the board. We have several, the Senator General, minutes, we have a regular commission meeting on 12:05, we have a workshop meeting on 12:12, special meeting on 12:13, then another special meeting on 12:15. I hope everybody's had a chance to look over your packet, and there is one item that should be added. Was that the 13th meeting, or was that the 15th that we need to add?
I believe it's 13th, sir.
For the 13th meeting, there was a paragraph left out where myself, Mayor Patterson, made some comments, so we will add that two minutes. Then I'm asking somebody to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the changes.
I have a motion to approve the change in our commission. I ask, Brooke, do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second, our commission is there. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Question carries. All right. Port St. Joe redevelopment agents.
I'll take that. Mayor, the sidewalk there on MLK and in front of the business of Mason Peters, we met down there with the city manager, and he has been talks with John Grantland, and we've agreed to fix that sidewalk and put it pretty much on the calendar of Public Works, and I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead with that project and shoot for first week in February to have that completed. I think we've... I see Mr. Langston rolled his eyes a little bit.
No, he doesn't, I have not. He actually could be before that.
Okay, it could be before. I think we're probably, there's some folks in the audience that'd be glad for that, but anyway, I'd like to make that form of a motion, and after that, Mayor, I've got a couple more comments from the PSJRA.
Okay, so you got a motion, the commission is there, second by Commissioner Ashbrook. Have we got a figure of price, do we know what we're spending yet, or we just don't?
I think it's 75 feet, is that right?
For the concrete material itself, it's going to be around $750, $800 for the concrete material, and it's not including anything else.
Right, and we're going.
That's good. We'll do the demo and pour the new concrete back. The only concern that I have would be, I guess, I see stands here, I met them out front earlier, the windows out front need to be protected in some manner, do I have to do it?
Yeah, when we do the demo, I just don't want to take a chance of busting one of those. We pull all that stuff off. Perfect, that's all we need.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody a please? Question carries for what?
Okay, Mayor, on the Avenue C sidewalk and some of the area from the sidewalk to the MLK in front, I've asked the PSJRA director, Bill Kennedy, to get Mr. Peters about possibly dressing that up a little bit on the PSJRA's checkbook, if you will. And he's got some ideas about that. He talked to Mr. Peters today, and he was in agreement with that, so I think in our next PSJRA meeting, we'll try to finalize that, get work on that, dress that up some.
Commissioner, was that, did they'll change the meeting since we don't have a regularly scheduled meeting on this first meeting in January?
I haven't heard him say, but I feel like since it's always before the city meeting, that it will be before the next city meeting, which is the second Tuesday.
He mentioned to me, trying to have it on the Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday, excuse me.
He talked about possibly having it on the second Tuesday, just can you clarify that?
Okay, all right, I'll clarify that, and then we'll put another second.
That's it?
Yep.
All right. Mr. Attorney?
Mayor, I do not have anything to give, to talk about tonight unless you have some questions for me?
So you don't have any questions?
That's the first. Second time.
Second time, I said.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Jim?
First time we have mayor is in reference to the 19th Street Bridge, but Commissioner Lowery's unable to be here with tonight, and if you want to table it, or what you want to do with it?
No, but I would like to take the time right now to maybe do it at the first of the meeting. Commissioner Lowery's grandfather is in grave ill condition in the hospital, so please just keep your prayers for his grandfather. He's been up there in age, and if you know him, you see him around town, all he does is preach. He's all about that, so y'all keep him in your prayers, okay?
The next item we have, mayor is in reference to the Centennial train, we discussed it at the last meeting, Commissioner Buzzett has it on there for you tonight.
I would just ask Jim to keep it on the agenda simply because we need to keep it in front of us because it needs repair, or fencing off, or something. We need to do something before somebody gets hurt on it, either we got, we need to fix it up, which I don't, I don't think that's really feasible, it's pretty bad shape, you get a close look at it, and so we need to talk about what we're going to do.
I've been thinking about it, and I like the idea of fencing it off, for safety reasons. It'd still be there, because a lot of people in this town love that old train, you know what I mean? Got a lot of kids that enjoy it over the years, and I just hate to take it down if there's some way we can protect ourselves by putting some type of fence around it.
I think if you put a four-foot wrought iron fence, it would look just terribly accurate.
I would like to do that, if, Jim, if you could maybe get John, and I'd be glad to be with you, let's measure it off and see what it'll cost to put a somewhat of a wrought iron fence around it, and of course, it'll need a gate with a lock, because at certain times, we, our guys may have to get in there to do something. Maybe we'll paint it one day.
We'll see if we get over someone to give us a cross.
Okay.
Sounds great.
That's it.
All right, what else, Jim?
The other item on the old business, Northwest Florida Water Management District funding request, we talked about it briefly at our last commission meeting. We did have a meeting with staff, Mr. Grantland, Mr. Smallwood, and I started looking at it. With the downtown area, we already have an engineer for sewer and water. Our thinking is that we probably need to go ahead and finish up the water first, based on price estimates and the amount of work that's going to be involved just with the water itself, we're thinking to stay within that funding request. Our recommendations is that we try to go ahead and finish up the water section, so we're trying to finish up everything we can with water, and then look for, you know, maybe come back to them again for additional funding source or something.
Are those water lines in the alleyways?
Yes, sir.
Whatever staff thinks we ought to do, I'm fine with that, we need to get any work on.
We'll come back.
I mean, with that staff recommendation.
We just, we've been very successful in getting a couple hundred thousand dollars from the Water Management District. If you start tackling sewer, I think the cost is going to be astronomical, and we may not get that option to get the funding for all of it, but that's our thought, was just go ahead and try to finish up the water and get that company.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, sir, if that's what your wishes are, then we'll put it in.
Oh, we have a motion, Commissioner Ashbrook, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Buzzett. Trying to get you to get in there. We got a first and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Likewise, the motion passes forward.
Put an application together. The last item I have, mayor is under the new business, New Year's Eve fireworks. We did have a meeting with the TDC, the fireworks is on schedule for 10 o'clock on New Year's Eve. They will be launched from the boat ramp, will also be trolley stops in town, the same ones as always, plus they added a different one, a new one out there too, Mayor, one requested out for Gracie, so there will be one there as well.
I see anybody have anything on the New Year's Eve fireworks?
The TDC, is that on their network?
Yes, on their network. On their network at 10 o'clock, is it?
Yeah. I tell you, when I got on that board, I'd have to laugh. No, no, they ain't credit for that, one thing. All right, that was second's for Public Works first, I don't know, they'll sit different.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a real quick update for the board on the water line replacement project on MNUA. This was the alternative section of the CDVG that we're doing at Public Works. We're around the 45% mark. We have a meeting scheduled with Beth Hollis from the Water Management District tomorrow. She's coming down to do a project inspection, for lack of a better term, you know, they did that last time, we did the 71 project, so we will have that tomorrow, and we've got some ideas we're going to try to kick around with her to get a couple more things done with that grant. You know, we're, we realize the savings in there, just from some different engineering and the project scope itself, so we're hoping we can get her on board to allow us to spend a little bit more money and take care of another problem that lies on Highway 98 that we need to get out of the ground, so hopefully that's successful. I anticipate probably less than two weeks after the New Year, the project will be done with our part. North Florida is doing real well, and everything should sort of coincide with our finished date there. That's the update on the water project, and I'll be glad to answer your questions if the board has any.
Any questions on water?
The last item is the Marvin Street lift station. Should be a couple pieces of information in your packet. One is a quote this year that pertains to Marvin Street, the other is one from last year. We have done works very similar to what we need to get done at Marvin Street on Park Street in Hollywood, it's a sister station, basically. The discharge piping in the wet well as it leaves, due to the hydrogen sulfide levels, when the stations were built, they were cast iron pipe, and they just don't react well to gases such as that, so we've lost one discharge pipe, and what the idea is, is to come back with an HDP pipe or a plastic pipe, that's what we did on Park Street last year. I was hoping to have a couple additional quotes for you today, for you to look at for consideration, I did not receive those from a contractor, so you only have one. So I say that to leave it in the board's hands as to what they want to do, proceed forward with that, wait for, you know, to the middle of January, but, you know, this is something that we're down to one, you know, workable discharge pipe. And, you know, I can't sit and say to the board it's going to last a week, a month, two months, you know, it's an unknown.
Can we go forward with this without a formal bid process?
Well, I'll let Mr. Anderson answer that.
Can you get it clear, emergency situation?
Is this an emergency?
Well, this is, we did that last year with Park Street Station, so.
Yes?
Yes, I mean, it's, you know.
Budgeted, non-budgeted, partially?
Budgeted, but, you know, it's in, the money is in the budget as it relates to sewer.
Yeah, we have a general category of $140,000 that we just bucketed so that we could be flexible with.
Right, it wasn't project specific.
It was, yes.
As he says, it's an emergency, I don't think we have a choice, but to go forward, this is half the price of what the quote was last year.
Yep.
You're comfortable with the company?
Yeah, I'll, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion, go ahead and go forward unless there's any discussion.
A motion, Commissioner Ashbrook, you have a second?
Second.
Second comes from Mr. Langston. Any discussion?
Yes. John, down in the final print under notes, does not include line of repairs, bypass equipment for by the owner. Do you anticipate that adding anything to the price?
Neither one will be required to do the discharge pipe.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Mr. Kerry Ford. That it for you, John?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for John? Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, we don't have enough for tonight, and ask these questions.
Any questions for you?
Membranes, where do we have these?
Well, we're still studying our, we got the bids in, and we're still going to do a little more research, yes.
The pictures of the clarifier, two clarifier rehabs that you passed, great.
They did a good job, it sure did.
Yes, I think they did a good job. And are we looking to do the other two next year?
Yes, sir. I'd like to budget it for next year.
Anything else for Larry? Larry, you full up on hiring, you got any vacancies?
Yes, sir, fully staffed.
John, you got any at this time?
Two.
Two?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mike, finance director.
We've started our field work for our fiscal year 16, 17 audit, Ben Vance came in last week, and he's scheduled to come back on January 8th to finish the field work to get us moving along with our audit to close out last fiscal year. And other than that, we are putting together a uniform order for staff at City Hall, if any of the commissioners need another jersey, shirt with the city logo on it, please come up to City Hall and select a shirt to add to the. That's all I have.
All right, where's Ward?
Again, I put some stuff in the packet for you guys, can, don't need the mic, can you know here? Okay, so we got inspected, and there's some things we've got to deal with in that inspection. We've done a lot prior to the inspection, but most of it deals with the algae, so that's our biggest bulk item that we've got to tackle. So put together our plan, it's a primary plan, so I don't know if you guys had a chance to read the stuff out throughout there. So if we know where we are, then most of these items are done, and the one that's, that's going to be a big bulk ticket item. So starting on 21, this is where, this is where we find our algae issue with the pond. And if you see on page 22, these are, these are the hits we've got. We've eliminated everywhere you see pH, we figured that one out, so that won't hit us again. And we've, we hit the fecal hits, stuff like that, those are tied to the algae, so if that makes any sense to you guys, the algae can blind some of your forage, where it doesn't actually attack the fecal, and then it shows up from time to time. So what we're looking at is, we really, we got to figure out how to get rid of the algae. So if you look on page.
There's water in the pond, right?
This is the water in the pond.
But we want less water there to get rid of the algae, one too far away.
That will help, and so that's why we're pushing the pond down now, we'll push the pond all through the winter, and we'll get it as low as, right now, we're about as low as we've seen it in, I don't know, 12 years or more. So we're down fairly low now, but we want to keep pushing it until we get to a spot where we got mucks where we don't have to spray.
How many gallons would that take a whole bunch to spray?
It's 480 million gallons when it's full.
How many?
480 million.
Somebody talking to us about using so many water, how many gallons would they talk to use?
Several million a day.
I would hope that we can get that, thank you, go on.
Right. Our permit allows us to split, like, two and a half, roughly two and a half million per zone, we got five zones a day. That's what our permit allows us to push out the pond right now. So I don't know if you guys have read through and you've got questions about each section, or how you guys want to go through it, but I just need you to, I need everybody to know, here's where we are, here's where we got to go, so everybody understands kind of the whole big picture.
We still can be able to stick to the original plan we talked about last year, which is pay off those solar bees and continue with biological dredging, is that, is that a potential solution?
We won't know that until we get the letter back from DEP, because this is a, this is a permit, every 10 years will be another permit, so there'll be stipulations with our new permit. So we don't know that yet.
What do you need from us today?
You guys to understand kind of where we are, and that's kind of what, I want to throw everything out, so here's everything we've got, where we've been, and then where we need to go as far as the plan.
Mayor, what we have is, we have 30 days to respond back to the actual site visit response, the warning that we received. We've been working with city engineers and staff to try to formulate a response back, so once we send that response back, DEP's going to come back and say, okay, we agree with your findings and what you've done, or we're going to give some recommendations, we're not exactly sure, so as soon as we get those back, we'll bring those back to you again as we work. But one question you had about the reuse, that's one thing DEP did ask, because initially, the way the lagoon was set up was reuse for, potentially for Wilmark Beach, as we know that never materialized, so reuse is one thing to look at on there. Another thing we've talked about too is our ancient pipes. When we're getting 3 million gallons a day on there, there's a direct correlation that we know that we need to replace some pipes too, so that's one of the responses back to, was let them know, hey, we're going to do these repairs, as soon as we get done with our water, we're going to start tackling this one too, so as soon as we get that back, we'll know.
Looks like a reasonable plan to me, Mayor. One thing, Kevin, I know you've been shorthanded for a while, and that, and some of the hits we got are probably directly correlated to that, and now I guess you're fully staffed?
We're hope to make an offer if the.
In a couple days.
Okay.
It's been maybe two months you've been, been short-staffed, and, you know, we bought that large back wing more last year, year before, I think, to keep the spray bills cut back, so is it working okay?
The equipment's working, we had to steal Tommy for a while. We just don't have the, didn't have the manpower at the time, you know.
So that should be an easy fix?
That, yeah, that part is.
Okay.
Well, we figured out, you know, we can steal Tommy, and then when I get the new guy in and get him trained, we probably won't steal Tommy as much, I've used him quite a bit this summer.
Okay.
And then when we get the other train personnel in, you know, we'll be in a lot better shape, but if you think about licensing and stuff, the only licensed operator we got besides me is Sidney.
Uh-huh.
Sidney, Sidney Ayers.
Okay.
So that's a lot of hours, you know, we're asking, you know, with Sidney to work right now, and best case scenario, Mark should test in about seven months, so we got a while to go with the manpower issue, but we, you know, it's just what we have to do.
Please keep pushing them to study and try to get at least Class C.
Right.
It'll, you know, boost their pay as well as help us out sometimes.
So we're starting, I'm working on Mark now, I'll have him prepped, you know, before his year, I'll have him sit for his test, and either he'll do it the first time, but that's what, I'm trying to spend as much time with Mark as I can, but, you know, to get him prepped for that, this is an aggravating piece, that's just one of the pieces he's got to know. So what do you guys, did you read the plan, is there anything that I need to talk to you guys about where I'm at, the plan, so we all understand where we are?
I think I'll probably have to give you one on one, because some of this is a little too technical.
I think I still have an hour in this office, and I still haven't understood it, so how Eric can I go to talking with him?
The basics of the plan says, you know, we can get from here to there, and it's not going to be free, but it's not going to be horrendous as far as costing. So this is the best plan that I could figure out, we have huge volumes of mine, and this will get us, if this works like it should, the pond's still there for another 20, 25 years, that's the kind of, that's what I'm looking for. Yeah, exactly. Should give us, you know, a lot more life for the pond. And that's kind of my biggest thing I got going on right now, so if you guys got questions for me, throw them out.
I got a question on your staff. How many people do you have on staff right now?
Well, I've got two, and I'm looking for, we're trying to make an offer this week for a third offer. It takes them a year before they can get licensed, 20, 20 hours, 40 hours, so even when you get somebody there and get them trained, they still, you know, won't be able to fill in those holes, you know, the hours that they need licensed, so.
How long do you give them to get the test passed, the test, how many times?
Two years.
I think two years.
Two years?
It's two years. But we're going to, we're going to try to get them all the help they can get, because they don't get this, the test stuff isn't something they see, it's all out of the books, so it's not like an on-the-job training, you know, for wastewater, because we don't do everything that they do with the test stuff.
Do you count your other man as a half a man for Larry? And he goes there, it works for you?
Chad, I stay him every time I get a chance, and I think what we decide to do is kind of split the pay, is that right? So it's like 70, 30 from that part, so.
He does all the testing, though.
He doesn't have the, well, he does all the sampling for the waterside, and then if he's not tied up, and there's a lot, and they're adding more of the year to that, so if he's not tied up there, I'll steal him any time I get a chance to help him with the testing and the stuff we do on the wastewater side.
So over there in your department, it actually only takes you and three operators?
It's a little tight. Would like to have a little more help, but right now, I think we need to get through some of these other things. It's kind of hard to tend to train a large volume of people at the same time for what we do, so.
I'm just trying to get an idea of what you think you need to be sufficient. You and three more, you and four more? Well, just an idea.
Probably another set of hands beside the three operators would, right now, I can't take a vacation, you know, we're up, we just got to have more trained sets of hands.
It's certainly something we can need to look at in the next budget cycle, for sure.
Right, okay.
I think we get from here to there, but yeah, it's going to, we're not even going to say.
Any more questions? Anybody? All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. City engineers.
I don't have much for you tonight other than the list the contractor has for bug rent. As far as I know, as of yesterday, they plan to finish that this week. I hadn't seen them yet. They plan to be out and finishing. And then, you know, the water line projects moving along, probably be pretty quiet the next two weeks on that. They'll come back in after first of the year, after holidays and finishing on them. That's really all I had.
When are we supposed to close out boat round Friday?
By the end of this month.
End of this month. So they don't have a long time to finish.
Then they know that, everywhere.
How are we going to handle the cracks that we contracted on that one side so bad?
One of them just needs to be replaced, just cut out and replace the worst one. Kind of the sidewalk area.
Right.
It's just going to be cut out, reboard on that area.
Clay? Where, where are we at with John Homestead? We got any more signs?
As of today, we're up to 42, six of those or maybe, but we still have not scheduled to, to go door-to-door to try to drum up some more customers.
So we need. How long have we got to work on that?
I'm not sure on that. I think we have about another year and a half, two years. We got time, but we need, we need to keep moving on there, so we need help. We need people that are interested inside of.
I still think we need to consider some kind of deal on moving up the sewer. We need customers. I think especially out the Cape, where there's a lot of building going on out there. I know they're, they're required, but some of them that are close to the line, they could look up without a lot of extra expense if we could have some kind of deal, payment on time, 50% off sale or, or what have you. We need customers and we need to figure a way to, to get them and, and not just the Cape, anywhere that, that we have a line running. So I, I just throw that out to.
We could have a month or we just have a little promote.
I'm just throwing that out for thought because we, that'll reduce for everyone if we can, if we can do that. So you guys think about that and then if you'll, you know, maybe come up some ideas and some areas, you and John, some areas that we could heavily promote to ties people. I know we're trying to do it at John Homestead, but if there are other areas that we could possibly do that.
Isn't that always one thing we talked about this current year? You know, we just haven't had the time to, to do that and focus on the Cape with the water projects we had. So that's something I think you're right in 2018, you should.
Code enforcement? Everybody looking at their pages? Please to call.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything on the agenda tonight unless the board has questions for me.
One's an update.
It says update every week. What you want to know?
They've quite ditched it. Ah geez, anybody have any questions for chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The city's hard.
Nothing unless someone has some questions.
Question? Any citizens wish to be heard tonight? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard on anything?
Yeah, on behalf of, Chester Davis on behalf of Waste Pro. I spoke with Waste Pro today and I talked with Mr. Jim Anderson about the season's pickup schedule. As of tomorrow, they will get the schedule out to the city as to Christmas holiday and the new year. What we're asking though is that the commissioners and the city notify our people that because of the holidays, we want to make sure the people put their garbage out early enough. Monday is the North Port San Diego side. That should be the only day that might be a problem, but we will be working one day behind. And so, you know, they're going to try to be as thorough as possible. They're not going to try to miss any cans if it's possible. But if they're not out there, it's going to cause a problem with the next, coming back to pick them up. So we want to make sure that the city, you know, encourage them to put the garbage out on time because actually it's going to be very hard for them to come right back to pick up one or two cans that's on the street. The cardboard situation's being taken care of. And we're asking people to not put trash and debris in cardboard, break it down, even if you don't put it in the dumpster, if you break it down and leave it beside it, we'll pick it up. But there's a problem when it's filled with debris and, and trash when you have a, that's a free dump there and people just throwing stuff out there. So we had that cleanup problem by tomorrow, so it'll be okay. But we're making sure we get it out there in time, we'll pick it up. But if you're one can on the street late, we might not get you until after the holidays. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Do we want?
Both sign? You want to sign it?
Oh, yeah. Excuse me, Chester, if you don't mind, there's a sheet up there for signing. We're going to have people when they talk, sign-ins for having, in case they don't pick it up on the microphone. Appreciate it. Is anyone else in the audience that would wish to speak tonight? Anybody? All right. Mr. Mizell, I'll go to you first.
Okay, Mayor, if we just digress back to code enforcement, it's a good time of year to remind everyone, don't put broken tables and old televisions and couches beside the road or behind your house. We're not going to pick those up. Waste Pro's not going to pick them up. You need to take it to the transfer station. So try to keep our city nice and pretty. This time of year, we're getting a lot of, a lot of goodies and so forth. So help the city out and, and keep it pretty. And so folks will do that. It'd be great. The other thing, I'd like to welcome our new Commissioner Langston, welcome aboard and look forward to working with you for a good long time. Welcome and also a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to our staff and all the folks in Port San Diego. Have a safe, nice Christmas.
Mr. Ashbrook?
I've got a long list tonight.
All right, man. Carry on.
Just an update, I spoke, I think, last month about the Northwest Florida League of Cities. They are going to be hosting their quarterly meeting here at Capital City Bank, February 22nd. They're also offering a ethics course that's free of charge for any other members. That'll be at 1 o'clock at Capital City Bank and at 5 o'clock, we'll start the quarterly meeting. 7 o'clock, there'll be a catered dinner by Paul Gant Barbecue. There will be an email sent out notifying all the membership, so we can give a little heads up. It'll be February 22nd and that is at no cost to us to pay for it all.
And as a reminder to our new Commissioner, that ethics is required. So get it while you can. It's free and should be a lot easier than watching a webinar on TV for two hours.
Yeah. Also, I'm surprised Mr. Charlotte didn't bring this up. Our grant funding requests for the Centennial Building as well as the Port Theater have moved up the list. We're no longer nine for the theater and 11 for the Centennial Building. We've moved up to spots seven and eight. So the governor only has to fund $2.4 million worth of projects for us to be fully funded on both of those projects for the city. So I'm hopeful that we'll have quite a bit come into the community. Also, let's see here, garage sales. Has anybody seen the garage sale out there on Highway 98? Estate sale, moving sale, garage sale?
Permanent.
Permanent garage sale? I've asked our attorney to look into the rules behind that. It's caused some traffic issues. You know, I've seen people try to walk across Highway 98 and they're getting out of their cars, going to an estate sale and almost get hit. I searched around the internet and actually found some news articles about, this was in Orange County, but it's caused a lot of safety issues multiple times if they're just holding them every weekend. Some cities have adopted ordinances that would prohibit, you know, more than two, four a year. But I did ask the attorney to look into that and it sounds like it's more a Department of Revenue issue because we don't have an ordinance prohibiting it. Is that how?
Well, actually. I think it's twofold actually. Commissioner, what we did was, is first off, code enforcement, he goes to talk to the owner today and I believe it's taken care of. Please let me know. So I think it's taken care of the, or may not want to take care of it. But yes, there is a requirement for the Department of Revenue after you have so many, you do have to have a sales tax number. You are subject to sales tax. So that is on the state level. But we also have in our code too, where if you define it today, you can, you're allowed to have one per quarter. So you can have, so I think we'll go. Just keep following, but I think it may be taken care of.
Last thing on my list, Duke Energy. Did we get anywhere with the trees there on Mimosa that they cut down?
Richie today, he told me that, he talked to the gentleman last Thursday that's supposed to chip those up and take care of them, said he was going to follow the man that's supposed to take care of those too. He said they were supposed to take care of all of those at one time over there. So supposedly they were supposed to. He said he took care of that last night.
And I'd also like to welcome Eric to the board. It's going to be a pleasure. You got a short amount of time to learn a whole lot. Good luck to you. I think so. And I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Probably won't see you again until next year, the third weekend here.
Good to you. All right, that's it.
That's it.
Well, I'd like to thank the commissioners for pulling me in and I'd like to tell the Group One that I'll be a hard worker and you can call me anytime. I'm available. I'll be fast. I'm not a hard person to deal with. So if you would, just give me a call if you have any issues and I'll go to bat for you. I promise you that.
That is.
Merry Christmas.
I just, when I saw Joanna White out there in the audience, I think she left. But I just wanted to make a comment on when I went up there Monday, yesterday, to the food bank they have over there. Man, they do a good job of giving them like food and people. There is some boxes and boxes and boxes and it's free. All you gotta do is go in there and get some. All you gotta, I didn't get a number. You have that 9 o'clock in the morning or something and give you a number and then you come back at 2:00. And you can live it up with all kinds of good food. It's really something to behold. And I'd just like to kind of make an announcement for people that may not know that the county has appointed me on the workforce board. So I will be joining that board and hope to work with them and to work for the better ment of everybody. So I was going to make that announcement. And I want to say, welcome, Eric.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And everybody, I want you to have a very Merry Christmas, have a safe Christmas and a very Happy New Year. And that's all I have, gentlemen.